Okay, welcome to the June 4 regular meeting in town of Niqwa. First item of business is to approve the agenda. Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda? If not, be it resolved that we approve the regular meeting agenda for June 4, 2024. Moved by Councillor Nado, seconded by Councillor Pottinger. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. You'll also have the minutes sent out. And be it resolved that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting held May 21, 2024 circulated. Moved by Councillor Kostinchuk, seconded by Councillor Gerard. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, we've done a few minutes here, so maybe we'll take a councillor's report. Councillor Nado.
Very short one tonight, some good news to share. We have hired a new librarian, so we'd like to welcome Caitlin Henderson. She's a fully trained and qualified librarian with librarian education background, which is hard to find. And she's actually looking after the whole library system, I believe, in the pub currently. And she'll be coming in mid-July. So we look forward to our new librarian in the town coming here. I think she's been in the pub area for eight years now, so we're very fortunate. The whole region is actually very excited because she's going to add extra support to the whole region. So really good news to share.
Excellent. Okay, Deputy Mayor Parrott.
Well, I forgot this. Well, I guess it was a privilege to attend the Economic Developers Association Manitoba Awards Gala last week in Portage Prairie on behalf of town council. The event was attended by many dedicated, community-minded individuals who advocate for their communities each and every day. An Niqwa Training Center project received the 2024 Economic Developers Association Manitoba Project of the Year, granting projects over $100,000. This award is for a project that demonstrates significant impact to a community and region. It was an honor to be selected from five worthy applicants across Manitoba. The training center was recognized as an excellent example of sustainable way to support local individuals looking for education and, as a result, improve our community as a whole. And special thanks, though, goes to our wonderful town staff who are highly involved in the demolition, preparation of the building, outside of their normal scope of duties. And for our office staff who are working directly with the architects, the engineers, contractors, to ensure quality work and lives on with ACC and having the project to be completed on time. And for our planning office where diligently working with all the above throughout the whole stage and making it happen. Thank you.
That's very good. Thanks, Murray. Okay, I guess we're pretty much at that time. Then we'll move into our public hearing. Be it resolved that we do now open this public hearing at 7:05 to hear representation variation application. V02-2024 of Scott McDonald. Moved by Councillor Kostinchuk, seconded by Councillor Sisley. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, I think our Scott is going to be talking for Scott.
So the application under for this file is V02-2024N. The current owner and applicant is Scott McDonald. The variation proposed is to increase the maximum permitted accessory structure size from the required 12% of the total site area, or 900 square feet, whichever is lesser, to the proposed 1,280 square feet within the ARR, which is the agricultural restricted zone. The current area affected is 291 Earl Road, Lot 1, Plan 59805. And the reason we would be in support of it for our office is to allow for the construction of a 32-by-40D attached accessory structure within the ARR zone. The notices have been circulated accordingly to the neighborhood property owners, and we have not received any comments or concerns towards the property. This variation essentially would allow for the maximum number of structures allowed on the property from 900 or 12%, whatever is lesser, to the maximum of 1,280. So there would be no more detached accessory structures being allowed within the property.
Are there any other similar situations in the whole playground?
Yes, there is at least three within the 100-meter buffer, actually, around the property.
Not that it affects anything, but Scott McDonald, just how high are you going with that?
What's that?
How high, how tall are you going with that?
I think it's 12 feet tall, yeah.
Any other questions?
Just for personal use, Scott?
Yes, just for personal use, yes.
Okay. If there's no other questions, then be it resolved that we do now adjourn this public hearing at 7:07. Moved by Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Councillor Nado. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'll ask Alison Young if she would move up here and talk to us a little bit about Property Assessment Service.
Yep, here's good. So my name's Alison, I'm an assessor out of the Portage office. And when I pass out here, there's two pamphlets attached to the front. I have stats of those here that I made in for you guys as well. The first one is my property now. You can sign up to get all of your assessment information online instead of paper. So there's that, and then just the regular reassessment pamphlet that goes out every year. And then at the very back is a copy of the assessment notice that goes out to all of your ratepayers. And then this part I will be going through, the impact of our 2025 reassessment. So for 2025, the assessed values of all properties will be updated to April 1, 2023 market values. Previously, it was April 1, 2021. Property assessments were last updated in 2023. The new updated assessments will be used for 2025 property taxes. The province's taxable assessment has increased by $13.2 billion, or 13%. Your municipality's taxable assessment has increased by $16 million, or 7%. So on page two, on the lower part, you can see the changes to your municipality's taxable assessment. So total residential is going up 5.1%. Farms saw an increase of 14.2% and commercial and industrial 10.4%. So overall, you saw a 6.8% increase. Assessment increases and decreases resulting from reassessment don't necessarily mean tax increases or decreases. Property assessments are simply providing the basis for distributing taxes among the property owners. Flip to page four, we have another chart here. So this table illustrates how property taxes in each class are affected for 2025. Now, this information is assuming the same budgetary needs as 2023. That's the last information we have when this was created. And so this is municipal and school taxes together. So residential would see, on average, a 3.5% decrease, farm a 4.8% increase, and commercial or industrial 0.5% increase. So on the very bottom, you can see 86% of people would actually see a decrease. Only 2% would see an increase of greater than 10% and $100, and 12% would see increases of less than 10% or $100. Again, that's based on 2023 budgetary. On page five, this shows just the municipal values. And so total residential would see a 1.6% decrease, farm a 6.9% increase, and commercial industrial a 3.4% increase. So what this is saying is properties with an assessment increase of less than 6.8% would see a municipal tax decrease, and assessments with an increase greater than 6.8% would see an increase. Again, assuming that same budget. Page six is some options if you wanted to moderate the impacts of reassessment. If you wanted any more information, if you wanted to look into that, you need to contact MSO. Page seven has a bit more information on the provincial property tax reduction, as they're changing that again this year and again following year, I believe. And one other thing I wanted to go through right now is proposing changing the way pipeline is assessed. It hasn't been approved or gone through or anything like that. It was just being talked about at this point. For the town of Niqwa, the change, if it were to change to the new way, is a decrease of 0.1%, so it would be very minimal effect for you guys. I'm supposed to remind you of your open house date here. You guys have an open house on July 4 at 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. For anybody that has concerns, if you do get people coming into the office, though, you can just have them call our office, and we will can deal with it at any time. And I also wanted to remind you of your appeal deadline. Which also does have a... I'm sorry, I have it written down and the dates are blank.
You don't want to visit the brochure?
Appeal deadline is November 4, and the bar of revision is November 19 at 16:00. Any questions? I know I went through that really quick, but...
Open house is located where?
Here. Yeah, the town office.
Just a question. You know, Niqwa has seen such rapid growth in new buildings coming. Roughly how long does it take for a new building to make it to assessment with it? Is it a six-month period? Is it eight, you know?
Once it's complete, it honestly depends a little bit on when it gets completed, just because of our work schedule, when we get our work done. But once it's complete, so if it got completed now, for example, it would get picked up this year. And then, because when we're updating our assessments right now, we're updating 2025, so we would add it now for 2025 and then send an adjustment for that portion of 2024. If it wasn't finished until a few months from now, and so we didn't come back and get it until next year, then it would get added next year for 2026, and then we would make the adjustment for part of 2024 and all of 2025.
Okay.
So we can always go back the two years.
Okay, I'm just curious like what that time is, you know, completed? And how that impacts, you know, how it impacts hitting our books, so.
For sure.
Okay, any other questions?
Are you guys fully staffed yet? You can actually keep up with on your workloads these days?
And did it out there? No.
Who is responsible for Niqwa?
I don't know where this is going.
Which is why an assessment officer from Portage is getting...
Portage is close to fully staffed, so we come and help.
Okay. Okay, well, if there's no more questions, thank you, Alison.
I will see you here.
Sure.
Thank you.
Will you be the one coming back for the open house?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. I believe Randall and Sal is coming, I think. It might be.
Somebody will be.
Somebody will be here, though. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing on, did we have any more council reports? Councillor Sisley?
So there's quite a bit with recreation economic development. The pool is open for the season. Season passes are on sale for it. Our rep director received a grant from the Beautiful Plains Community Foundation to get a new water accessible wheelchair. It is a completely submersible wheelchair that can help people with limited mobility get in the water so that they can still participate in lessons or aquafit. This weekend, on Saturday, we have the Manitoba qualifier for the Manitoba Summer Games, the bike races out at the Back Forty. It is for under 13 and under 15-year-olds. You must register ahead of time. There will be no registrations taken that morning. It's because everything is online, because it is through the Manitoba Summer Games process. If you do want to get registered, if you can contact Nicole Cooper at the town office at recreation@niqwa.ca. Day camp is filling up fast, 60% is full for most weeks. So Nicole's asking if anybody is wanting to get their kids in to register right away so that you're not disappointed on your weeks if you don't get it. June is participation month, so Nicole has given me a calendar here. She's got a whole pile of stuff that she got set up through her grant. And with the participation month, if you're participating in these activities for the month, you get so many entries, and there's an Apple Watch, and she's got some cool mugs and stuff to give away as well that you can enter for. Canada Day schedule will be coming out shortly. She figures within the next week or so, we are still, and I did say this every council meeting, the Canada Day, I'd be mentioning volunteers. We are still looking for volunteers from 4 to 9:00 p.m. That could be just helping out with the bouncy castles, it could be helping with parking. You don't have to work from 4 to 9, even if you want to work an hour. We would take just about anything at this point to get some volunteers down there. She has come up with a really cool idea for what's called a duck dive. Instead of the duck races, you buy a duck, and we're ducking them in the pool, and then we're going to have one of our lifeguards dive in, and whatever duck they come up with will win the 50/50 on that, so kind of a cool thing. Niqwa Tourism has created a historic walking tour on their website, so if you want to visit niqtwatumism.ca, you can explore their interactive map for their walking tour. They also wanted to thank everybody that came out to support the Chamber Fair. Even though there was snow on Friday, it was cats on Friday, they did actually get a very good turnout for Saturday and Sunday, so they did quite well with that. And Niqwa Habitat for Humanity, they will be having a meeting. It's a very important one, it's about the family selection process for the Habitat Home. It's Monday, June 17, at 7:00 p.m. at the CEC building of the United Church. And she did give me a poster just to show everybody. So this one's an important one, so anybody that's interested, if they can come out to that one. And there is one other thing, I can quickly talk about it, sorry. So the town of Niqwa Arts Forward and Beautiful Plains School Division have partnered together. We got an indigenous artist, local indigenous artist Megan Peters, to do a design for an orange shirt. The proceeds from this, as a fundraiser, will go towards paying for the Indigenous Culture Day on September 27. The shirts do have to be ordered by June 20, though, and then we'll get them all in September, so.
Thank you. Okay, is there any others?
Murray, do you want to speak to Public Works Committee?
I'm doing a resolution on that.
Yeah, I can speak to it if you do.
Okay. Well, we mentioned it last meeting, but because of the pothole situation in town, we've redeployed a lot of our budgeted items for major projects to repairing our streets. And so Mill Street and Hamilton will be getting a bit of that money. So our puke truck has arrived. You'll see our staff using the puke trucks. And we'll be starting to fill these potholes and do...
Maybe explain what that is.
Puke truck is when you drink a bottle... No, I'm... Okay, so true, puke truck is it's a big, long elephant hose which mixes the gravel and the oil-based tar into the hole, and it dries up and solidifies, and then basically the waterproofs and fixes the bottle. And everything will go smoothly unless it rains. And then if it rains, you have to wait till they dry.
Just to touch on, like historically, the last number of years, we pulled that truck in for about a week at a time. And this year, council committed to a month of renting that. So we've heard, I think we've heard the public's concerns, and we've driven over the same concerns that the public has, and we've tried to shift budget accordingly to make sure it's a priority.
Yes, unfortunately, we all enjoyed the nice, warm winter, but it certainly showed up on the damage it could do. So we're doing everything that we can to remedy that. Okay, our manager of operations, Denise, is away today. There's no report.
Yeah, I was just going to speak to the similar things, that the truck has arrived. We've trained three staff in the running of that particular catcher or puker truck now, because as mentioned, we've got it in the past and prior years, and came with an operator. So because we're keeping it for the full month, we had staff trained, and we're going to try and keep them there as best we can and enjoy the length of the days, you know, between rains, if it continued to rain. As far as our wastewater treatment plants, they are at the point now where they're actually taking the泥and filling the basin up there, so we're getting a little closer to being able to get things up and running. And yeah, I guess that's the summary. We probably noticed those have been to the pool. We have laid down concrete, pulled out all the paving stones, and there's cans of concrete all around there now. Uh, yeah, the rust is coming up around there. It's good. The rust was kind of touched on, I think, so that's good.
Okay, thank you. Correspondents, Touchwood Park Association?
So Touchwood Park is having their annual charity golf tournament, and this marks the 28th year. It will be held on July 29 with the Niqwa Golf and Country Club, and there will be a banquet following at the Elbowhead Center. Proceeds are going this year to the Accessible Playground Project, and they're looking for town support for the 2024 tournament. We have normally given, you know, act open items, we gave Four Face Jackets last year for the tournament. And they would take almost any donation, or you could participate in sponsorship levels anywhere from $150 up to $500 and over. So if you're interested in donating again, but they also want to know if you want to put in a team. $100 per person to actually play. You could have a council team in the golf tournaments. Whatever you think. Still golfers are on this table?
I'm already working a tournament, so...
Yeah.
I've heard of golf.
Oh, I would like to go.
Oh, it's a curve you said? Do you want to think about it and get back to me? Yep, and we will consider support of some sort. We'll discuss that in-house and compare it to other years and...
Okay, on the finance. You've all received the financial statement ended April 30. So motion reads be it resolved that we approve the financial statement for the month ended April 30, 2024. Moved by Councillor Gerard, seconded by Councillor Pottinger. Any questions on that? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. For accounts, we have accounts, our regular accounts. Be it resolved that we approve the accounts for May 2024 totaling $1,432,041.39 as reviewed and representing check 2024-00643 to 2024-00827 excluding 2024-00718. Moved by Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Councillor Nado. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
I'm going to remove myself to the next item.
Okay, Councillor Gerard removes for crosswalk. Okay, be it resolved that we approve check 2024-00718 for May 24 home hardware totaling $1,362.98. Moved by Councillor Kostinchuk, seconded by Councillor Pottinger. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Licensing fees calling.
So this is an annual resolution you prepare and pass based on Biola number 3032. When you have a mobile home park, you have to give sufficient notice under the landlord-tenant legislation when you alter rents. So technically, these are rents as much as their license fees payable here. So we're asking you to adopt a resolution for an increase of 2.52% for the licensing of mobile homes in Niqwa.
Okay, any questions? Councillor Gerard.
That just keeps things in line, similar to where we saw property taxes for landlords, right? It's not a extra fee on those people, it's just keeping in line to match what residents have done with their own.
Yeah, I should maybe mention that, because we do have to set for a year coming, so we don't know the middle rate, so we're, you know, obligated to use the years that we do have in place. We look at the two years and match it against any increases we have locally for properties that actually are under the assessment rule.
Okay. Be it resolved, we approve the increase of 2.52% to the mobile homes licensing fees for 2025 under the authority of Biola number 3032. Moved by Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Councillor Kostinchuk. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Calling, was there any unfinished business?
None.
No? Okay, new business. So we have the approval of the application that we just heard earlier on the McDonald property. Is there any further questions on that? Is there any further questions on that? If not, be it resolved that we approve variation application V O two two zero two four of Scott McDonald, respecting lot one, presenting lot one, plan five nine eight oh five, that two ninety-one hurl road to increase the maximum permitted size of an accessory structure for the required twelve percent of the total site area, or ninety square feet, which is lesser, to the proposed one thousand two hundred eighty square feet to allow for the construction of a thirty-two by forty detached accessory structure in the A R R agriculture restricted zone. Move.
Sorry.
Now, move by.
I'm just questioning, is that supposed to be nine hundred square foot, or is it ninety?
Oh, sorry, nine hundred. Okay. Sorry. Friendly amendment.
Oh, good catch, Counselor. Nine hundred square feet. Yeah, to the proposed twelve eighty. Okay. Move by. Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Counselor Sisley. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, so two weeks ago, we talked about, did he talk about the back truck that our guys were looking at? Colleen, did you have anything else to add on that?
So yes, in the budget, we actually prepared for the purchase of a back truck, and we budgeted the greater than seven hundred thousand dollars it would require to pay for one, split between general operating and utility. We sourced out two different trucks. There's very minimal companies that can do this, and then you also have to look at the fact you could be subject to getting one bill, which takes a lot of time. So Westback Industrial actually had a unit that they were able to bring out here and let us demo. We really liked the unit, and based on the necessity of our current truck not having the ability to perform work for us necessarily anymore, we're kind of under a time crunch. We could maybe go to the other, you know, demo the other truck as well, it wouldn't be ready in time, so we decided that we would recommend to council based on what we've seen, that we purchased the back on single engine common unit from Westback Industrial for seven hundred ninety-eight thousand five hundred fifty dollars plus tax. Stay it fast, it's a little amount of money.
Yeah, yeah, but it's interesting, you know, out of all the equipment that certainly, certainly our guys were, were getting fairly concerned about the age and the amount of use that passed one.
Well, there's been a lot of repair money in the last two years on that unit, so.
And not just the repair money, it was the fees we were paying to hire contractors to bridge that gap, to work it down, and, you know, this is a prime example, if we didn't have a chronic plugged sewer situation, maybe that truck might have lasted a little longer, but high usage is...
High usage, yes.
Just for the public, you might say, why aren't you buying used? That's kind of the trouble we had with the last truck, it was good out of the gate, and then the, the investment in repairs and like that Counselor Gerard said, you know, bringing in supplementary service from contractors that bite the bullet and buy something.
And this is something we can't do, we have to.
Not anymore.
Someone's having a sewer leak, just residents really need that.
Yeah.
Okay, motion reads be it resolved that we approve the purchase of back on twelve Y D single engine combination sewer truck from Westback Industrial Limited in the amount of seven hundred ninety-eight thousand five hundred fifty thousand plus tax. Move by. Counselor Sisley, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
I did try very hard to make him take the return trip of the old truck, but he didn't seem very interested.
Okay, sale of property, Colleen?
So in February, we sold lot three, plan six two three six one, or four hundred Allen Street to an individual, and since then, just based on circumstances, we were unable to conclude the sale. So we have had quite a bit of interest in the last few months since we have offered that for sale to that individual, and we have, because of the passing of time and the interest we have been receiving, we are asking and recommending based on getting a hold of the previous guy and not being able to conclude, then we proceed with a different purchaser tonight.
Okay, any questions? Motion reads whereas resolution number two oh two four dash two one dated February sixth two thousand twenty-four agreed to sell lot three, plan six two three six one to Gabriel Menault, subject to the terms of the development agreement, and whereas the town has been unable to make any progress in concluding the sale, whereas by passing, by the passing of four months, the town wishes to proceed in selling the lot to the next interest, interested purchaser. Therefore, be it resolved that proposed sale under resolution two oh two four seven dash two one be declared null and void, and that the town proceed with the sale of lot three, plan six two three six one, roll eight three two seven zero at four hundred Allen Street, to Jim and Sherry Philip truck for forty-five thousand dollars, subject to the terms of the development agreement. Move by. Counselor Gerard, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, Colleen, I guess we've kind of talked about paving, but anything else to add?
Not really, as Deputy Mayor Parrott referenced, we, since the spring we had and the condition of the streets out there, we actually looked at the two of the worst in the commercial district, the stretch of pavement from Mountain Avenue over to First on Hamilton, and the same length of pavement for that block going from mountain to mail, or, on Mail Street, sorry. So the quotes actually that just recently came in to do the Mail Street block, it's only one block, it's a hundred eighty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars plus J S T, and do that block on Hamilton, it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand four hundred and twenty-nine plus J S T. This is just to do paving, this does not take into account, as we've preached for years now, it's nice when you pave a street to actually do all of the water and sewer infrastructure underneath, because then you take away the risk of cutting up the street right away to, you know, unblock a sewer, or redo a line, a water line, or whatever the case may be. Based on the condition of those two particular sections of the street in the commercial district, and use the gap, we decided we're just going to proceed with the paving. Be a four inch lift on those, hopefully it'll be a very pleasing result when we're done. We don't know the timing as yet, we've been told they will be coming, you know, hopefully before summer, but as we all know, we're at, you know, their mercy for whenever they show up in your community, so. But I'm asking for approval tonight to redirect our budgets to doing these two sections of the streets.
Okay, any other questions? Very clear.
I just want to comment that it's a, you know, it's a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar adjustment in how budgetary spending has happened, and really want to thank the committee and administration for pivoting on this, because it's something that we had to see within the town. It's, those are very hot, busy streets, and, but, and to the community, when you say, you know, updating and upgrading roads, when you see that three hundred and sixty thousand dollars only touches a four inch surface on two blocks, you can understand the magnitude to start doing massive amounts of infrastructure spending in the community as well.
Yeah. Excellent point. Okay, be it resolved that we accept the quotations of Zenith paving to install new asphalt on most portions of Mill Street and Hamilton Street from First Avenue to Mountain Avenue in the amount of a hundred and eighty-seven, not, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-nine plus G S T for Mill Street, and a hundred and seventy-five thousand four hundred and twenty-nine plus G S T for Hamilton Street. Move by. Counselor Sisley, seconded by Counselor Nado. All in favor? Opposed? Peter, Colleen?
I'm going to remove myself. Perceived conflict.
Okay, Counselor Gerard removes himself for perceived conflict.
So this is a rental agreement, we actually, with the number of staff we have in the areas where the community growing a little bit more with the bike park and where we have to travel, and the fact that we don't have a truck for everybody. We've done this before in the past, we're actually recommending to council that we rent the services of the gator for fourteen hundred dollars a month for the months of June, July, and August. And of course, June will run a little now into September because of when we actually secure lots.
Yeah, any questions? It's a lot of area to hit around on. Okay, be it resolved that, be it resolved that we approve the rental of the two thousand twenty-three John Deere Gator E thirty-five E for the months of June, July, and August at a cost of fourteen hundred per month plus tax. Move by. Counselor Ottinger, seconded by Counselor Costin Chuck. All in favor? Opposed? Colleen, bylaws?
So the next two items on your agenda are bylaws thirty-two oh seven dash twenty-one and thirty-two fifteen dash twenty-two. So under the municipal act, previous readings of a proposed bylaw are rescinded if the proposed bylaw does not receive third reading within two years after first reading, or is defeated on second or third reading. So the town currently have these two bylaws that have not proceeded to third reading, both of which are well beyond the two-year timeframe. To proceed to third reading, the property owners were required to enter into development agreements with the town, and that would set forth terms for the development of those particular properties to which they applied as supporters under section one fifty of Planning Act. To date, we have not been able to proceed with finalizing those agreements, and the interest has waned. So for bylaw thirty-two oh seven dash twenty-one, it was proposed to amend the zoning of lots one and two, plan six zero eight one, from light industrial to residential mobile modular home zone, for the purposes of creating a modular home park, and this in more particulars, forty-seven acres that was previously known as the Hoppin property, and it's west of the Public Works yard. Bylaw thirty-two fifteen, oh, sorry, it was given first reading on October fifth, two thousand twenty-one, second reading on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Bylaw thirty-two fifteen dash twenty-two, it proposed to amend the zoning for parcel one, plan five six nine five, parcel three, plan five eight four seven, and parcel eight, plan five four two eight, from light industrial to residential multi-unit zone for the purpose of instructing multi-unit residential buildings, and this one sits to the west of West Park Mobile Home Park. It was given first reading on April fifth, two thousand twenty-two, and second reading on May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. So while these bylaws would be deemed rescinded based on the two-year timeframe that it expired, administration might to formally defeat each bylaw. This would provide clarity within the town's historical records, where we can actually enter the date of June fourth as a defeat on third read, and this would allow all parties, including the planning district and the provincial, community, and regional planning office, to officially close these files. And I say this because the resolutions that get followed up and get sent into the community regional planning office, and they can close the file, where if we just call it rescinded and do nothing, we would never actually know the bylaws. So the recommendation is that the next two resolutions for bylaws thirty-two oh seven and thirty-two fifteen on this agenda be formally and officially defeated.
Deputy Mayor Parrott?
Had we passed these two bylaws with the third reading, that would not give the town of Nequa control to have a development agreement with possible people coming in to make plans. So this way, we can actually provide proper control for the next developer coming in.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so the motion reads, be it resolved the bylaw number three two oh seven dash two one, being a bylaw of the town of Nequa, to amend the zoning of lots one and two, plan six zero eight one, from M L industrial light zone, to R M H residential mobile modular home zone, be now read for the third time and passed. This is a recorded vote. For those in favor? And that motion is defeated. Okay, on to the next resolution. Be it resolved the bylaw number three two one five dash two two, being a bylaw of the town of Nequa, to amend the zoning of parcel, parcel one, plan five six nine five, parcel three, plan five eight four seven, and parcel eight, plan five four two eight, from M L industrial light zone, to R M two residential multi-unit zone two, be now read for a third time and passed. Again, this is a recorded vote. Those in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
Oh. Didn't move. Okay, sorry.
So, Mayor Parrott?
Move by. Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by?
Counselor Gerard.
Gerard.
Counselor Gerard. Okay, those for? Those against? Okay, and that is defeated. Somebody's getting old.
Do we need a mover for the second one now?
You're just...
I'm not watching you learn.
Yeah? Okay. I'm good.
Must be getting you near the end of the night. Other business? Anything else?
That's nothing, you see, actually, it's so fat. No, I have nothing.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? If not, be it resolved, council of town of Nequa do now adjourn this debate. Seven forty-seven, move by. Counselor Costin Chuck, seconded by Counselor Ottinger. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.